Meeting is called to order, South Hampton Town Planning Board, Thursday, May 25, 2023, in the absence of the Secretary of Alcohol and Roll. Member Fulham.
Present.
Member Neely.
Present.
Member Mutu.
Present.
Member Catalonado.
Present.
Secretary and Chair are absent, the Vice Chair is present. We have a quorum, could we please rise? For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes today. Anthony, are you going to start us off?
Sure.
Or tell us what's off?
I'll tell you, for my stuff, I think this is the right agenda. Number is five and six, Hampton Cove Estates and Remsenberg Marina.
Okay.
The first application is two lot subdivision, Aaron Sachs. This is right on Lewis Road in East Quogue, it's the R20 zoning district. It's a two lot subdivision with existing house. Get back to the plan. With a flag lot to the back. The, did we do the pre-application on this some time ago? They finally got the Health Department approval. I think I have a checklist, I did do a checklist to make sure. It says here, the Health Department's not received, we do in fact have that. And aside from a few minor things, the application I think is in order, it's pretty straightforward. So I was going to recommend deeming this application complete, and I was going to recommend waiving the hearing. We didn't get any comments the first time around.
Thirty day written comment.
Thirty day written comment.
Very good. Do we have motion to that effect?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by George, all in favor. I oppose abstentions. Five yes, two absent, and Ketchuponic.
Ketchuponic, okay. So, we're ultimately going to be coming back for this, as we're going to deem this application incomplete today, and I spoke to Heather Wright, who's the attorney representing it, but, because we're going to have a more meaningful discussion, this is a complicated project. So, ultimately, what we're looking at is a ten lot subdivision. This is a property that's on Old Country Road in West Hampton, it's in the CR200 zoning district.
What is the street directly east of, is that Sophia Court?
Yes, I believe, that, oh, that's a...
Sophia?
Sophia Court.
Sophia, yeah. So it's adjacent to that subdivision. The proposal here is for a ten lot subdivision through a transfer of development rights from another property. That property sits along Sunrise Highway, I'm going to show you an overall map. It's a long skinny piece, just over thirty something acres, in the core preservation area of the Pine Barrens. Just, it's hard to see, but, the yellow, so this would be the sending site, and then the property down here would be the receiving site. The applicant, like I said, we're going to deem the application incomplete, because the, you know, the question is the mechanism, right? The yield map, for example, is showing one acre lots, showing nine one acre lots, which I believe is the minimum lot size you need in order to do a TDR. But, to get to that yield, they got to transfer in enough development rights to make up the deficiency from a one acre lot to the CR200 that is required. And so we got to, you know, I think I got, we got to sit down with the applicant, I got to sit down with Dave Wilcox, and sort of figure out how much, you know, what, you know, exactly. So, that's what Heather and I discussed yesterday briefly, and we're going to sit down with Janice as well. Ultimately, they're showing a nine lot yield, they show a second plan showing ten lots, because under the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, you'd have to give a 10% for an affordable lot. And then they ultimately show a cluster plan, clustering the lots with some open space along Old Country Road. At this point, we're going to have, I think, a meaningful discussion, when I can prepare some, you know, process for this. In the meantime, I think we would just deem it incomplete, and then we'll come back after I...
You could even do a work session on it.
We'll do a work session, I think it'll be easier.
So our action then is to deem it incomplete. Do we have a motion?
Oh wait, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Just real quick, I think, for purposes of guidance, so...
You have to use the podium and just identify yourself.
Sure. Heather Wright for the applicant, Ketchuponic LLC. Anthony, I did speak about this yesterday. I believe Sophia Court, that subdivision, was very similar to this one with the transfer of the development rights, so we should, I've already put in a foil, we should take a look at that subdivision to see how that transfer was applied, because I think it's the exact same thing here.
I believe the Sophia map just transferred in that, there was that one oversized large parcel of the cul-de-sac, and I think that's the only part. I seem to recall Sophia was just the standard, but I, you know, it's been years.
I think if we, we should take a look at it. I spoke to the surveyor, David Fox, and he alerted me to the fact that Sophia might be something worth taking a look at as a comparable type of transfer. So we'll see what it shows.
Yeah, we'll get this on for a work session.
That'd be great.
Very good. Do we have a motion for it incomplete?
Motion.
Motion by George.
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor. I oppose abstentions. Five yes, two absent. Anthony, are you going in order?
Yes, but before we do number three, which is 917 West Main, which is completeness, if I think if we go to number 10, let's do the secret first.
Which number is that?
20.
20.
So secret on the same, 917 West Main?
This is the property identified as 91 Windmere Court in Remsenberg. Application is 917 West Main LLC, it's 1 Windmere Court in Remsenberg. This is the industrial subdivision that the planning board did some time ago. This was the last lot in that subdivision to develop. We did a pre-submission on this about a year ago, maybe sixteen months ago. This was one where the applicant had to go, this LI40 zone, and you can see we established a buffer here, it's not an aquifer, but we did a buffer, because I believe it's residentially zoned down here. This was one that after the subdivision was done, the applicant went to the Building Department to get permits, and at the time of the subdivision, we didn't really identify what a rear yard would be and what a side yard would be, and the Building Department came up with an interpretation that rendered the property difficult to build out, so they ultimately had to go to the zoning board, which they did. The application is for, what is the square footage here? A 6,000 square foot special trade contractor building, parking on the side, parking in the front, similar to the design in the other lots, and of course, the buffer would be maintained. There seems to be some old structure that was in this buffer, it was in there at the time of the subdivision, so it's shown to be removed. And ultimately, if we need to re-vegetate, we'll do that as part of the application. But I did the first part, which was an environmental assessment form. I know that you've raised the issue about cumulative impacts along the road there, right? And about, you know, trucks, which is, you know, and I think we've sort of tried to discuss that with, you know, engineering. You know, but, you know, as it relates to this project, it's hard to know exactly, you know, because a lot of special trade contractors don't generate a lot of, you know, traffic other than perhaps truck traffic coming in and out of the site depending on, depending on the nature of the use.
I know that industrial park, well, it might be the nicest industrial park on Long Island.
They did a really good job on this one.
It was great.
But, you know, we did a short environmental assessment form here, there's not really many issues as it pertains to this. We got the buffer from the subdivision, we're going to get a good design out of it, even if the architecture here right now isn't perfect, it's going to go to the ARB, and we're going to probably get some changes. But really, there were no significant environmental impacts as a result of this use, so I was first going to recommend a negative declaration for the project.
Do a negative, we'll do it in separate resolutions.
Separate resolutions.
Do we have a motion for a neg deck on 917 West Main?
Motion.
Motion by Craig.
Second.
Second by George, all in favor. I oppose abstentions, five yes. Now we're going back to our...
Back to number three?
Number three.
And that's, now we would have to deem the application complete, and I believe I'm getting a hearing for June 22nd.
Very good, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by George, all in favor. I oppose abstentions, five yes, two absent.
I have number eight.
Number eight? Looks good.
Charles Cetero, Voluble Trust. This was one, corner of Oak Drive North and Mill Road in Noyack. This was actually just a lot line change, at the time I did a little color drawing. Purple, blue showed the existing, they basically were splitting it down the middle to create two equal sized lots. Didn't require any variances, it doesn't require any, you know, the existing structures, and the shape makes more sense given the zoning. But, of course, they're still working on the Health Department, so they've asked for an extension. I'm doing this one retroactively, because with staff leaving and everything, projects get taken over. So in this case, I was going to do two 98-day extensions, and they submitted for it and they paid for it. Then I would go from February 21st, 2023, to August 20th, 2023.
Okay, so that's for both of them, one resolution.
One resolution for both.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate. And second by Tom, all in favor. I oppose abstentions. Five yes. Do we still have, how about Chicken Brier Hill?
This wasn't in your package, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
We've got one in Eastport.
Yes, this was also Jackie's, for which you, this board adopted a pre-application report, and then I took it over when it came with the final application. This is for a four lot subdivision, properties on North Avenue in Eastport. It's the 3.845 acres, and like I said, in the R20. The applicant submitted the application for a final subdivision approval. This was one, let me just go here, that is sort of a complicated review, because of some, you know, draining and flooding issues. I should show on the aerial, there is some open space down here and there's some across the street at the time, and that open space, by the way, as it relates to this property when you're looking at it this way, is down here. The planning board asked for an open space, basically down through the center of this property, to cover the concrete soothway, you know, that is already located on the property, sort of a strange shape of open space, but really, that was, that came out of the engineering review and design for this application. At the time, the planning board recommended the 20-foot buffer along this property line here, which is shown. The open space in here, they identified the steeper slopes. One of the things is, and I'll go through when I do my resolution, you'll see that there's some engineering stuff in there that's already been addressed and the condition is satisfied, so, so I'll go through when we go through the resolution. But, they're showing a common driveway for lots one and two, then a second common driveway for lots three and four, and then lot five is the open space parcel, which is to be dedicated to the town. We had deemed it complete, we had a final hearing, and, so I have a resolution. If I keep one for myself.
Where does that?
I have, I got, no, I gave it to them. So if you look at the first page, I have my findings on there. The first one talks about this Health Department approval that was issued, the second is about the pre-app report, the project's in substantial agreement with the report. It's actually a Type II action under secrets and no further environmental review is required. This is consistent with the planning board's recommendation for a reduced density, open space standard plan. It's not a cluster plan, because the lots conform to zoning, so it's still an open space plan, but not a cluster plan. We got the 20-foot naturally vegetated buffer along the northly property boundary here. Planning board notes, there's a small driveway encroachment on the easterly property boundary of lot three. There is a neighbor's property, very small corner of it, comes into the corner here. We're noting it, and I'll defer to the attorneys, putting in a condition that says, take it out, let it re-vegetate. To be quite honest, I don't know what the neighbor will say, you know, could there be some legal dispute that happens as a result of that? So, I'm not sure how we...
It's not, it's not part of the open space or anything?
No, it is in what's the naturally, like I said, buffer, but a very, very small portion of it. I think we note it, and it's really sort of...
Private party.
Private party, is my opinion.
Issue, yeah.
So that's number six on there. Number seven, the open spaces to be dedicated to the town. Number eight, talks about the common driveway utility easements that will serve lots one and two, and then a second one for lots three and four. The town engineer actually approved the common driveway and drainage plans on October 20th of 2022, and although it's in here, and I'll get to it, the SWIP plan was actually also submitted and approved. So, as you'll see when we go through this a little bit, the issues that it pertains to slopes and drainage and all the rest of it have been addressed through the approval of those documents, so I just wanted to be clear. We had a public hearing, and we did get one letter from a neighbor who wanted to make sure that this buffer was being imposed as it is. So again, on page two, we got the comments from the engineer. Again, they talk about the Speedy's general permit, the SWIP, which, all of which has been done. Number three is the drainage, drainage requirements, which we've incorporated actually all that language into our own covenants. Number four is recommending a, basically a notice covenant and indemnification covenant that lots two, three, and four are subject to, or may be subject to flooding. Talks about fees which have already been paid, and as I said, the SWIP, which he has reviewed and approved. On the bottom of the page there, Office of Fire Prevention, which goes on to page four, there's no requirements for any additional firefighting protection devices. Conservation Board came in with some comments, you know, they would like to see slope easements and drainage easements, and maybe even some subdivision designs. These are sort of consistent with their previous review, but I think at this stage of the game, I think we got the map largely where the planning board wanted it, notwithstanding some of these concerns, and the other side of it is, we did eliminate some additional clearing and some issues by doing common driveways, and these will be subject to new fire systems anyway. You know, the Conservation Board's recommending clearing restrictions, you know, in this area, I don't know that it's necessary, it's not in the APod, and, you know, unless we were doing, you know, for some ecological reason, I find it hard to impose APod restrictions on properties that are not in APod. So if this board is inclined, you know, we could do it, but, I mean, the property is heavily wooded, obviously, but, you know, that's, that was the one recommendation that I, you guys could discuss.
They also talked about reconfiguring some of the lots?
Yeah, that's pretty standard, but, we, like I said, our SWIP, and approved SWIP and approved common driveway plans were based on the revised plans per the planning board's pre-application report, which didn't talk about any of these additional changes that the Conservation Board did. Highway Department did notice, raised the same concerns about stormwater runoff and drainage, but again, that was the purpose of the common driveway plans that had been reviewed and approved, with drainage in there, as well as the stormwater pollution prevention plan, to ensure that everything's staying on site.
Is the sloping of it there so profound that we have this major concern about runoff?
I, you know, I have been out there, I don't think it was nearly as catastrophic, and I would have been more concerned if, at this stage of the game, the engineer raised more concerns. But since he's already approved the SWIP plan, he's already looked at the overall development of this subdivision, has come to the conclusion that the drainage can be contained on site with, with the drainage that's called for in the, in the plan.
I'm sorry, I've been through there a number of times, it's, you know, I know it's heavily wooded, but it seems flat.
Yeah, it's not, it's not catastrophic, you have to go in there a little bit, you know, to see the changes in the grade.
I was looking at the dates, so just to see if the town engineer's comments took into consideration the Conservation Board, but the town engineer commented first, I wonder if it'd be a good idea just to, you know, circle back on that and say, will you take these into consideration with your final determination on the...
If that's something the board would like you to do, because we're, you know, we're on our action deadline for our condition today, so, so I'll let you make that decision. And then we didn't get any of the comments from the other agencies, so then I have a resolution to approve the plan with some changes. Number one is the proper notation regarding common driveway and utility easements.
Anthony, circling back to highway, the highway comments, we need to have that finding though, to address, I mean, I think you mentioned the common driveway and the SWIP, so we should incorporate some, something to address.
Findings, yeah.
Finding right after that.
That works. So the first map, and so you want to put that in the findings, right?
Yes, yes, just, we've addressed it.
Well, they also recommended covenant that they could be subject to flooding as well.
You mean the engineer?
The deed notation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Deed notation, yeah.
Okay, we have that in the approval, so. On page six, it's the postal addresses, remove the proposed structures from the map, you can't file maps like that. Number two is the driveway drainage construction. Compliance with the recommendations of the Engineering Division, as may be applicable, I put in there, because again, SWIP has been submitted and approved, and the common driveway plan has been submitted and approved. That's why it says approval of the common driveway utility plans, but again, I found out after that that has been done. Payment of the park fee, $14,944.26, that's for three lots, you don't get charged for the, for the fourth lot, to be quite honest. Submission of covenants and restrictions, no further subdivision of any lots, no lot line changes without planning board approval, all utilities underground servicing all lots. The next one is the language from the town engineer regarding the drainage. The next one's also after that, the indemnification that relates to lots two, three, and four. Another one, all lots are subject to flooding due to the existing watershed conditions, that was another recommendation that the engineer said. Retention of all stormwater on site during and after construction, the common driveway and utility easements that are shown on the map, and then the construction of the common driveway utility easements for lots one and two prior to the issuance of a CO, and then the same thing for lots three and four. Submission of the common driving utility easement documents, title certification, mortgage consent, town approval of all legal documents, submission of an offer of dedication to the town for open space, and town board approval of same, and then submission of the Mylars and paper prints, and then a signature of the map within 62 days of those submission.
Anthony, on page seven.
Yep.
The first two bullets.
Yes, sir.
Now these are covenants. I don't know, Christine, how would we, how would we address structure covenant?
Yeah, I need a little guidance on this, actually.
It's an advisory notice.
Yeah.
With respect to the flooding?
Yeah, the first two bullets are, is there a covenant, weird, this property is indemnifying the town.
Page seven.
Page seven, the top two bullets, these are covenants.
We have, there's a specific form that they sign, it's an indemnification, this is, like, it's a routine thing that they've done with these, I've seen these before, and they will sign, like, a certification, it's a document that they have, and they'll sign that, and then these notes go on the...
So should that be in the list of covenants?
What?
Should that be in the list of covenants, or should be?
No, it's an actual, we get an actual, they'll get an actual document that will sign...
So you say remove that covenant?
Maybe take that and make it a separate line item.
It's a condition, a submission of the certificate of indemnification.
Perfect. Certificate of indemnification. And what about the second bullet? Is that advisory or...
And that's a shown, it's an...
That was sort of like a notice covenant that the engineer was recommending, I don't know what you think about that, Christine.
I would do it as a covenant, just to have like an extra, because usually you noted on the survey, but sometimes people don't pick that up, so it doesn't hurt to have it, because then the title, you don't pick it up as a CNR.
So it's an advisory, advisory covenant?
Yeah, I would keep it as a covenant.
Okay, so we'll leave the second bullet as covenant, but the first, the top bullet.
And then change the other one to submission of the indemnification certificate.
Yeah. Everything else is boilerplate.
That's submitted to each potential homeowner of lot, each purchaser of the individual lots?
Well, yes.
That's submitted to us, so that we, it's recorded in part of the file, and then the CNR will have that in the title report, so they'll always get that, and then there's supposed to be an additional notification on the actual deeds. It'll say it.
Yeah.
It happens more than you think.
So at what point does the, a potential homeowner or property owner?
When they get a title report.
Get notified, okay.
So it's linked to the title, basically, right, is what you're saying?
Yes, it's linked to the title, and the deed.
Okay, because that could, that could, that could happen sort of late in the game for a potential homeowner, then.
Well, we're going to make sure the certificate of indemnification for the lots, all of them, is submitted for, any signature of maps or anything like that.
But that's for us, that's for us.
That's for us, yeah.
For the homeowners protection, as is with any covenant, it's done at title.
So we've removed the covenant, and I don't mean to, you know, beat a dead horse here, but should we remove that covenant, or should we state in there that lots one, two, and three, and four are subject to a indemnification?
I think Christine wants a covenant because it's recorded on title, right?
Well, for the second bullet, you told me the first.
I want a condition that they submit their certificate.
The first bullet.
Well, you want that indemnification, that's going to be a submission.
I want an indemnification condition.
As a condition, fine.
Yeah, that's a, once they submit it, they're done.
Because that's our protection for indemnification against any potential future claims, and then the rest are to protect the homeowners, so that they are knowingly purchasing this with that condition.
I could do that.
So how do we address the Conservation Board comments? Because they're pretty strong at first, saying redo the whole configuration, but then they're saying, if you're going to approve it, we would recommend specifically for lot three, which is the far right, with the steep slopes, that the conservation easement be addressed, so how would we include that?
Is that new with the final referral?
That's the final referral.
That was the final.
The thing is, the driveway for that property is going to come through the areas of the slopes in question there, it's, and this was the best design that we could get out of this under the circumstances, and actually, this access was changed based on the recommendations that came out of the pre-application report, based on the comments from the engineer previously, you know...
So it's the lesser evil?
It's, you know, it's, you know, it's, I think it's designed, you know, given the slope conditions, as opposed to an easement which would prevent you from doing anything in there.
Could you clip the easement and have two on either side to address it partially?
What did the SWIP include when it was permitted?
What do you mean?
Does the date of...
Did the SWIP take that and so can... I just want to find out what was already approved.
Well, Heather.
I have a little more information that might be helpful.
That's great, yeah, I just want to address those comments.
Heather Wright for the applicant, for Chicken Brier Hill. So when we received the pre-app report, the comments from Conservation were the same comments that you are seeing right now, and as a result of those comments, we couldn't get our Health Department approval without engineering approval, and the engineering required at that time the SWIP to be completed, so that we could take a look at the impact of the slopes on the property, and the configuration was designed to address any flooding concerns and the sloping, and that's why the open space parcel is located where it is. So, we did take a look at the recommendation for reconfiguring the lots, but this was the best design given, given the topography here, and then after the SWIP, which engineer, engineering reviewed and approved, then we were able to get our Health Department approval. So this sort of was a long process to get us to where engineering was comfortable with the plan.
Yeah, so I guess what I, you were saying that the engineering comments address the town Conservation Board, when I was looking, so I was like, oh, that makes sense to me if the dates were chronologically linked, right? But the Conservation Board is February 22nd, and then you go back to engineering, came before that, so I just wonder if, if it circled back around and we landed in the same place, that's fine.
I see what you're saying.
The information that's being presented doesn't make me conclude that.
I understand.
So does it make sense to have, yeah.
No, I hear what you're saying, but what I, what I was trying to point out is that the Conservation comments are the same comments that were in the pre-app report, which engineering did see and then address, which we addressed with engineering through the SWIP. So Conservation's comments haven't changed, they haven't changed what their thoughts are on this, but engineering has seen those comments, is my point.
So the SWIP was created after February 22nd?
No, the SWIP...
It came back around and landed in the same spot, what you described, did they say the same thing and it landed in the same spot?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's just the same thing, but this time, they already took care of it from when they first made the same comments.
Okay. So there was an earlier Conservation Report that said the same thing prior to the February 22nd?
Yes, yes.
I understand, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
I just wanted to do the due diligence to connect the dots.
No, you're right, and another thing is, because we, you know, and I've done them on many subdivisions, we do slope easements all the time, I mean, we say it, you know, and a lot of times, we're also looking at how the slope is integrated with, you know, the adjacent properties, is it going to impact the adjacent properties, you know, as you could see from, you know, the aerial here, we're pretty well-developed around here. But, so yes, as she said, circling around, came back to the same spot. The other side of it is, Kate, is that this happens a lot during referrals, because The other side of it is, Kate, is that this happens a lot during referrals because we'll get, you know, referrals from all sorts of agencies who are not reviewing each other's stuff and, and, you know, at times, maybe not so much here, it can become a huge disparity between what agencies are recommending.
We go the Aqua.
DEC does it a lot, too.
Aqua for protection, conservation, preserve all the shrubbery and fire department, clear all the shrubbery.
Yeah.
I'm on the other end of it in my own project, so I understand. So thank you. I just wanted to make sure that those pieces click together. Thanks.
And I did, Heather and I did speak about this yesterday, that I anticipated that some of the board would have questions about the slope and all that, so.
Thanks.
I appreciate that.
Heather, have you had a chance to review the conditions?
I have, and they're acceptable.
Okay, you picked up the conversation, removing some of these covenants to one or two of them.
Yes, and just for clarification, Christine, you're talking about the town engineering indemnification form that the owner signs and then gets recorded on the property as the certification?
Yeah, we do, I have a sheet that I can use from another thing. I don't remember where, who comes from exactly.
It comes from engineering, I think.
Okay, because I've seen them from highways, too, or two highways.
I've seen them from highways as well.
Yeah.
So that's what you're referring to?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Heather. Okay, do we have a motion for approval then?
As revised.
Yep, as revised. Motion by Craig.
Second.
And second by George, I'm sorry. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, five ayes, two absent. And Anthony, are you gonna?
Yeah, was that seventeen?
Seventeen, sure. Were you waiting for Mr. Gazo or are you going to plow forward?
Plow forward.
What's that?
Were you waiting for Mr. Gazo or are you going to plow forward?
He's not here. I, you know, I told Joe that if the planning board was okay with the resolution, I probably didn't have to say anything.
Pretty straightforward.
Maybe I should rephrase that. I told Joe Gazo.
He was here last week and his stuff cut.
I know.
He was in here trying to do walk-ons.
He didn't come from Florida.
With the puppy dog eyes, you know?
Is he on Zoom?
Oh, no.
That I doubt.
I guarantee that. Joe does not do Zoom. Back in the Zoom days, there'd be the shaky Cameron, his daughter would be there. Dad, look, hit this button, Dad.
Fifty-three dash four dash twenty-one point three.
Did you have a copy? Yeah.
Did you guys have the reference?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know, we've looked at the overall map a bunch of times.
A bunch of times. So here, let me actually.
There it is.
Yeah, you're familiar with it.
At one time, there was plans afoot to do a reconfiguration and merge lots, and that gets, that's not happening.
Yeah, this map goes way back. So this is a development section that the planning board approved, it looks like, well, nineteen eighty. Shows where the road access is coming from. The first lot in question here is this one. You'll see the top portion here was approved as a development section. Road abandonments were done. Which interesting is, Joe owns the property down here, so this piece was part of the development section. A road abandonment happens, well, this piece automatically merges then with that piece. But this, this portion won't be developed, but it does increase the size of the property and then decrease the amount of development right you need ultimately to build on it. So, so this is the first property in question. And as you know, I did this before, Joe submits his certificate. Basically, in this one, they're going to be transferring, and just like the other one we're going to do, half the development right will be coming from within the school district and half the development right would be coming from out of the school district. And that's basically what all of this resolution says. Last time, it turns out, as you remember, there were about thirty certificates. All my calculations were a hundred percent correct.
Quite an ordeal to track.
The one that was incorrect was one of Joe's.
Quite an ordeal to.
It was an ordeal. So I did the same thing here, and I'm recommending approval of the request to build, subject to the redemption of the certificates that I outlined.
Now, are we putting any type of protection on the southern portion?
Here?
I mean, he's got clearing restrictions over.
Which is what I said, he's got clearing restrictions, the development section map doesn't allow this piece, but we could certainly put something in there.
Use his clearing, since he's got to keep clearing.
The clearing, yeah, the clearing, actually, yeah. He's going to be limited by the clearing on this piece of property. The other side of it, he's also got the road review stuff done already, so all that's been, been done. Which you'll need, it becomes less of this board's problem because you planned for everything, but then it becomes a problem at the time of the building permit, which is where they're asking for the, for the road review information. But Joe has all certificates in order. I have the originals downstairs, and I was going to recommend approval of this, subject to the redemption of the certificates.
Okay, we do that by resolution?
Yeah.
For this lot? Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Kate. Second by George, all in favor, aye. Opposed, abstentions. We have five ayes. Do you need me to sign those or anything, Anthony?
Ultimately, yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I gotta make sure, you know, everything's properly filled out.
Anthony, so just to be clear, the section that's north of that road, where North Caesar, that's where the building and group itself will be, the piece below will just be part, become part of the property.
Because it's, it's effectively part of the property.
It's moved, right.
Because once he did that road abandonment, it emerges by.
But he's not going to be building on that second piece.
No, and I had a very clear discussion when I sat down with Joe. I said, Joe, I want to make sure I understand this because this is the development section. He said this, this portion can't be built on and won't be built on.
But it allows him to clear more on the upper portion.
On the other one, right.
Well, yeah, you're going to have a percentage based on the overall size of your property, yes. But the larger your property gets, the percentage goes down. And, yeah, I mean, he did it, obviously.
But ultimately, it's a bigger, it's a bigger square footage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it will all be limited to the building envelope on here.
So where was this second lot, item eighteen?
Oh, I will get that for you right now. Hold on.
It's in the same map, right?
Yes, it's, actually, I think it's this one over here. Let me just make sure, hold on. Three dash four dash twelve point one. Oh, it's still twelve. Yep, it's this one over here. And again, I have a resolution here. It's the same exact thing, just with new certificate numbers and new calculation.
Now, this one's just a single, the lot, though, right?
That's right, and this one requires more development rights because it's smaller.
There were no road abandonments?
No, nope. The, you, I don't have it here, but we have the road plan that was approved. And as I said, Joe has all his plans approved and in order. And this one's also, like I said, going to require more development rights, which is all spelled out in the resolution.
We don't have to delve into the.
They're, they're down to, you know, and I'll say this just anecdotally, this is not really important, but as you know, Joe is still going to have something left over one of these certificates. There's going to be point zero zero three four. He's, he's going to get a new certificate at the end of this.
He's going to change. It's like getting change in the dump.
But you can see they're coming in handy.
Yes.
In clearing situations and all the rest of it.
Abandoning these roads, you get a little bit of.
Yeah, for sure.
Everything a little bit helps.
So these references to baby certificates, that baby development certificates?
Yeah.
That's the new generation of certificate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, we need a resolution for item eighteen?
Yeah.
With motion?
Motion.
Motion by George.
Second.
Second by Craig, all in favor, aye. Opposed, abstentions, five ayes, two absent. And if you get those to me between sessions, I'll sign.
No problem.
Anthony.
And then, I think my last one is number. Nineteen.
Nineteen, okay.
This is one, you'll remember this, I'll show you.
You saw this.
Woodland Farmer. So this was one that we had a discussion on. We had a, a pretty lengthy discussion on this. This was one where that, because it's looking to do a tennis court back, back here, required some additional clearing and then some revegetation up in the area here. At the time, they came in with a proposal to do some TDR, and the planning board wasn't inclined to do the TDIs. So then they came in with a revegetation plan, and that's when we had a lengthy discussion, if you recall, about, you know, retaining walls, staying in, coming out. Here's the ultimate, where the board came down on this, is, you know, they said put in, you know, if, we discussed potentially putting in a tennis court over here, and that's where the issues of the retaining walls and everything came in. And then they came in with the engineer's report saying removing these retaining walls, it's going to cause us to have to clear outside of them and regrade and cause potential issues as it relates to the structural integrity of the site. So as you can see, this, this whole thing is walled in. So in exchange, the planning board said, okay, if you're going to put the tennis court back here, you agree that you would allow the revegetation to occur in here. It's roughly five thousand square feet, it's not a huge area, and let the retaining wall stay. But constructing the tennis court, then he said, how do you get to the tennis court to construct it? So the applicant, we actually did come in with, I'll show the board. So they had showed in the yellow here from the point of the driveway where they would get access to the tennis court, okay? And then they're showing that that area on a revegetation plan to be revegetated as part of this application. And then they show you, you know, the area where they're revegetating, including the access there. It was, was one portion, retaining wall, was it the one in the middle, was that coming out or was that saying?
It's saying.
It's saying, okay, I wasn't sure. But that's what the board, you know?
Oh, I'm sorry. Vehement area, yes, area around.
You can go up there.
Lisa Poyer, Twin Forks permits, on behalf of the applicant. There's a small little retaining wall in the walled area. It's kind of a half curve there. That is coming out.
Okay.
It's, it's a short little wall and we have no problems taking that portion out.
Yeah, so that's coming out.
And you're going to revegetate, revege that whole area?
It's not the entire area.
It's not the entire area.
There's a small strip right up against the driveway that will be, will remain, you know, unvegetated as far as revegetation is concerned. So five thousand is like eighty percent of that, that area.
So eighty percent of that area?
Approximate.
Yeah, so there is larger than, than what's required for revegetation.
So what is, what is the net gain or loss?
Where, where, believe it or not, they have, what is it, maybe thirty, forty square feet to spare, actually. So they're going to be less than what they're allowed.
Thirty to forty square feet.
Yeah, they're, they're, these always come right in on the money, Craig. Rarely, if someone's allowed twenty-five percent, do they come in with fifteen percent. It just doesn't happen. But in this case, we're going to still be, they're clearing a little bit more than they have to. I mean, that's revegetating a little bit more than they have to. So I actually did do a resolution, which I don't know if it made it to the, to the agenda, but I, let me just say, because you guys had changed some of the conditions recently, condition on all work to be inspected for compliance with the approved revegetation plan prior to the issuance of a CO. Four final as-built surveys must be submitted to the planning division showing that the revegetation applies with the calculations, and that the site disturbance is valid for a period of one year, and then they could get an extension requested by the planning board for six months, subject to a three hundred dollar fee. You guys did that because we, we found ourselves coming back and redoing these things two years later, so. So those are the conditions for this one.
Okay. I think we're good to go, Lisa?
Sure.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig. Second by George, all in favor, aye. Opposed, abstentions.
I think I'm done, but Janice told me she's, she's not here today. I think she wants to, might have a maintenance bond or something, so I'm going to find out and maybe come back up here.
Okay, as soon as it's ready, I'll bring it back up.
Yeah.
And Jeff, it's ready, Jeff, are you ready to roll or?
Kate, you want?
I'm going to break. Thank you.
Come on, Kate.
Looks great.
Make us look bad.
Item number six.
Are you going to start us off?
Item number four.
Item four, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
This is six fifty-six, six sixty-four, Monetalk Highway. They were actually already before the board regarding pre-submission application for construction over three thousand square foot, two-story mixed-use building. They did, we set the pre-submission conference, our public hearing. We had the public hearing, but it looks like the ad that we had in the paper had an error on the hamlet. The hamlet was listed as Hampton Bay as opposed to East Quogue. So we're reintroducing this and rescheduling them for another public hearing, which will be for June eighth, or, yes, June eighth?
June eighth.
June eighth. The last public hearing, there are no public comments, but concerned that there was an error in the ad, we want to make sure that anyone that did miss it gets the opportunity to voice any opinion or comments regarding the project itself, so. So we're setting the date for June eighth, twenty twenty-three at six PM, again, for the site plan and special exception application for six fifty-six, six sixty-four, Monetalk Highway.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate and second by Tom, all in favor, aye. Opposed, abstentions, five ayes. And are you doing number seven, Cypress? No, that's clear.
Yeah, that, that's for the first time, it's not me.
How about Van Tassel?
Yes, number eleven. So let's discuss this. It's pre-application report. Property's looking at one forty-three South Road in West Hampton. Just pull up the standard plan for you as well. Pre-application report for Van Tassel Dean is for a proposed two-lot subdivision. The subject property is located in the New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area, also located within the high priority water quality area. The subject lot is in total sixty thousand thirty-one square feet. The existing nature of the property includes a single-family dwelling, one story with a cabana, an attached wood deck, and two stone driveways. All the structures that currently exist do not have a CO. Historically speaking, it looks like a pre-existing CO application was requested and applied for, as well as requisite permits for the detached cabana and wood deck, but have since not been completed or gone through the process of inspection and whatnot. So the property still currently exists without any COs. The site's topography is predominantly flat and known, doesn't, there are no natural depressions that exist on the property, and obviously, the surrounding area is primarily residential properties. And to the west, excuse me, to the east, actually, which I'll make a change on there, is the Beaver Dam Creek. Beaver Dam Creek. This is listed as a type 2 action, no further environmental reviews required. However, the property being that it's located in New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area, a Phase 1A or B archaeological report will be required. This is not within the Towns Aquifer overlay district, so there are no clear restrictions associated with the property. We did hold a public hearing, April 13th, 2023. We did receive one public comment. We did close the public hearing with a 10-day written comment period where we did not receive any public comments. During the public hearing, the one comment that was voiced was concerns regarding excessive subdividing within the town, a general comment, not necessarily specific to this project. And the constituents voiced her opinion regarding us quote-unquote chopping things up and where does it stop, was the specific quote. We received comments back from fire prevention. Those comments are their usual comments for subdivisions, nothing that specifically stood out. We also received comments back from the West Hampton Beach Fire District. Also had no comment regarding and objection to the proposed project. Landmarks as well, concerned that the property had a structure that was going for a pre-existing CO, deemed that the structure itself had no historical value, is not requesting any additional information. Engineering is requesting and recommending five-foot-wide utility easements on the east side of the property. They also recommend that the wood fence that encumbers on the south side and the east side of the property be removed prior to final signature. A three-inch drainage for all future impervious surfaces and monuments shall be located on each corner. Conservation Board, which had more comments specific to the project itself, is requesting that the applicants install, excuse me, the applicant include in their final map conservation easements along the easterly line of both proposed lots one and two. And also another 20-foot conservation easements on proposed lot two, which is the flag lot, along their westerly side to allow also court-required driveway. But that would be essentially the only structure that would be permitted within that conservation easement. As you can see, it's not necessarily on this map, as is a recommendation by the Conservation Board. They do, they do add that the easement itself is in place or being recommended primarily because lot one and lot two have mature Norway maples through the area, which I'll show you now. Lot two of the proposed subdivision is fairly wooded, if not completely wooded. And there's some natural vegetation that the Conservation Board would like us to maintain as part of it. And considering that this is not in the Aquifer Protection Overlay District, generally speaking, this lot itself is permitted to clear 100% of it. No comment from the CAC Board, Suffolk County Health Department, or, and the Trails Advisory Board saw no trail opportunities here as well. So a couple of things I want to touch on. The application itself does not currently meet our zoning requirement for lot area. Both proposed lots are under the required 40,000 square feet required under R40 zoning district. The applicant is also before the zoning board, so this report will serve as additional guidance to the zoning board as they review their application with them. So my recommendations read as such. Prior to the submission of the final subdivision application, we're requesting that all structures receive a building permit and then obviously requisite CO certificate of compliance as may be needed by the building department. The pre-application report, once again, will serve as comments for, guidance for the zoning board of appeals. The standard plan itself is subject to our 40 zoning dimensional regulations. And again, I list out lot, lot one, which is proposing 30,274 square feet, where 40,000 is generally required, and lot two, 29,757 square feet, where again, 40,000 square feet is generally required for lot area. The final map with consideration to the conservation comment, the final map with consideration to the Conservation Board's comments, I am requesting that a 20-foot-wide conservation easement be put on the westerly side of the property, excuse me, the easterly side of both lots one and two, as well as a 20-foot-wide conservation easement along the westerly side of lot two, which is the proposed flag lot. The applicant also shall contact New York State D.C. to see if the subdivision is impacted by any possible presence of, or threatened by endangered species on site or within the vicinity of the subject property. Again, this property is located fairly close to Beaver Dam, which is a tributary for, I believe, what's it called? The Cove, Apituck Cove, I believe, that runs to the south, southeast. And again, I list all compliance with the fire, fire prevention comments, as well as the town engineer comments, and Suffolk County Health Department approval upon final application. And recommending that we move forward to the final application stage once we receive ZBA approval, of course, for lot area, and that the final map includes all the requested recommendations as part of this pre-application report.
Jeff, since this is going to be our advisory report to the ZBA, let's go back to number two in your recommendations. I think it would be appropriate to alert the ZBA, and this is all fresh in our minds, that the applicant has the option of transferring a development right to, to gain their, if we, if, you know, if the ZBA starts granting area variances without this requirement, it's, it kind of put a kibosh on the whole Pine Barrens Development Rights program.
Sure.
So we might just want to incorporate that language in item two.
Okay.
Since, you know, just the, just with the second sentence, the zoning board shall strongly encourage to require the transfer of a development right within the West Hampton School District.
Okay, I'll include that.
Just roll that into the language in item two.
Definitely.
The only other thing is item four, the conservation easement, we typically refer to them as non-disturbance buffers because they're handled by covenants. Easement is, it's much more, you know, involved process with the town board and everything else, non-disturbance buffers.
The Conservation Board is asking for, well, a non-disturbance buffer, easement or buffer over the both east and west sides of lot two. Is that going over the flag lot coming into?
Correct.
So they're allowed to build a driveway through the, through the east end slash down the disturbance buffer?
Right, so the buffer would have language that would allow for a driveway and limit, limited to only a driveway. So really up to the board, if the board can eliminate, considering that we're already preserving and implementing a buffer, a 20-foot-wide buffer on the easterly side.
Yeah, I think a buffer on the.
On the driveway.
Might be.
I can see.
Sure.
Yeah, on the east side it does, but driveway's the west side, right?
So I'll eliminate that.
Jeff, when you get a moment, can you get back to the aerial, please?
Sure.
We can probably do it from the end of the flag.
Are you moving the conservation easement and you're making a buffer?
A buffer.
A C O, so a buffer, are you going to change the side?
We're just going to eliminate the one on the dog leg, on the, on the.
So they're requesting for both sides for lot two. The Conservation Board's comments are requesting a buffer on both the flag lot side and also the easterly side.
The easterly side of both lots, but the westerly side of lot two.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
I mean, it's hard to see, but it seems as though the flag lot, the section of flag lot seems to be fairly disturbed, but it's hard to tell from the aerial.
Yeah, I mean, it does about another residential property. The entire property, or the proposed lot two is virtually mostly vegetated. But I think more of the concern, concern that's proximity to the tributary area, which is what Beaver Dam Creek, is what they want to make sure that any, any runoff from the IA system is protected by the buffer itself. Although this is for the most part developed, but an additional level of protection shouldn't hurt.
So we're creating two undersized lots?
Yes.
And I'm trying to decipher by, from the aerial, if that's, you know, cohesive with the, with the rest of the development.
So, yeah.
That's their argument at the public hearing.
Right. It's subject to ZBA approval, and obviously with the inclusion of any TDRs from West Hampton School District, yeah.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree more with them on this.
Yeah, so I'll definitely include that in the report. But from a lot area standpoint, they are comparable to the general area if you look at the size of the lots. They wouldn't be completely far off, even on Apituck Point Road. I know this is kind of your neck of the woods, Craig, so you might be more familiar with me, or more than me, but these sized lots are, would be more comparable to these two proposed lots. But again, they still have to make their requests via the ZBA, and until then, they won't be before us. Yeah.
And that's always a big argument to make at the ZBA, and I, I mean, it really falls flat because you're basically perpetuating old zoning.
Yeah.
You know, the whole, there are a whole host of reasons why the zoning change, environmental and infrastructure and density of the community.
I agree.
To say, oh, well, everyone, we've got a lot of these other lots around, so let's just.
I agree.
But that's the ZBA.
So, I mean, should we say, planning board strongly recommends? Because I also.
Kate's recommending all recommended language.
No, absolutely.
Very, very strongly.
Sure, absolutely.
Urges.
Jeff, did you pick this application up from, from the beginning, or did you pick it up from another step?
Yes, from the beginning.
From the beginning. Clearly, this whole, I mean, these structures don't have CVOs. Should we have picked this up for completeness on pre-app?
No, we, we always cite it as an issue at the pre-app stage, which is correct, right? Is that what you're saying?
So we'll allow, we'll allow, will the application complete even the structures have known?
Yeah, because the standards for completion is not like the site to be in performance. And sometimes they're trying to, sometimes they're trying to legitimize it.
Right.
So that's a condition of, so it's kind of circular.
Right. I got you. Okay, that makes, that makes sense.
Okay, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
What else you got for us?
So we're taking out the easement on the, on the west side then?
Correct.
Yeah, we're going to take out the easement on the west side. Yeah. We're going to augment that language in item two.
Make it a little bit more on the stronger side.
On the, to the stronger side.
As I mentioned earlier, it's in a high priority water quality area, so we're requesting that the, any construction on proposed lot one and two utilize the IA system. But yeah, that would conclude my recommendations.
Can I ask one?
Is the applicant here or anyone?
No.
No further comments?
Tell me a question.
So this is, this is a, this is pre-application report?
Yeah, just a pre-application report.
Okay, good. Do we have motion?
Sorry. What I hope's a quick question.
Sure.
I noticed the town engineer's recommending removing of the fence.
Correct.
On the south and east side, just curious, is that, why is that?
I'm not sure, honestly. The south and east side, it doesn't really impact, there is a private road there. Outside of that, there's really no impacts, nor were there any additional comments regarding it. One thing I could tell you, that it doesn't have a CO either, and that might be one of the reasons why he wants it to be removed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So just, we're just adopting the pre-app report. Do we have motion to adopt the report?
Motion.
Motion by Craig.
A second?
Second by Kate, all in favor. Aye opposed, extensions, and we have five yes. And Jeff, you gonna keep going or?
Oh, is it for me and Claire?
Okay. Claire, you gonna jump in? Are you going in order or?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we're gonna roll back to.
Yes.
I think we have Cypress 69, 69 Cypress, number seven.
Yeah, that's an extension of one year for the pre-app reports.
Okay, very good. Do we have motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by George, all in favor. Aye opposed, extensions, five yes. And number nine, the date camp?
Yeah, we can go to that one.
Okay, going to item nine.
This is, just to recap, a month ago, you had granted a year extension on the site plan, but you wanted an update of what they're going forward because there was some discussion about some, possibly some modifications to a fence that's gone, was on the east side. You're ready, right, to speak on it? So the applicant's representative's here, he's got some additional plans for you, and he can identify you for the record.
What's your name, sir?
We got the mics on the table now.
Oh, good afternoon, Wayne Brillen, I'll say more since you've been doing for the applicant. What I'm passing out, I did only get earlier today.
Is that what you emailed earlier?
I emailed it to Claire and Christine earlier, so she could forward if you want it as an email. It includes a report from VHB, and these are plans from Jeff Butler, where I've highlighted some changes and will identify those. And I apologize for not being able to have large sets, but he did email me the two details that are highlighted on those small sets of plans, and that's the other item that I'm submitting. If I can, I can sit here.
Good, yep, absolutely.
So as Claire indicated, a couple of meetings back, you did grant a one-year extension, but you wanted us to give you an update. And so after that meeting, we went back specifically to look at the record and find out how there was a little confusion over one particular element shown on the plans that got stamped approved. And that had to do with a fence along the northerly property line that would be on top of the berm. The other issue that came up was the actual material of that fence. So just to give you a background, the planning board approved on March 12th, 2020, this site plan after a lengthy review, environmental impact statement, noise studies, things of that sort. The seeker findings did not require a fence along the northerly property line that the planning board adopted in 2018, but two years later, during the site plan review, the planning board requested that we add a solid stockade fence along the northerly property line, which was incorporated into the plans. And just so you see on the site plan, the green area is the length of the fence. And you'll see that that followed the property line for approximately 400-some feet, and then it veered southwesterly into the property. And that was following the contour lines because that area is more or less a valley that leads down towards a little fresh pond. And there is a common driveway to the properties to the north in that valley, and there's also a pathway from the camp down to the pond in that area as well. So the fence was designed to be at the so-called top of the ridge before the slope that starts to slope down. And in that same area, while this was being reviewed, there, you can see the dining hall, and there's sort of an open field behind the dining hall, and that's an activity area. And the, and the town engineer in his review wanted to make sure that any runoff from that area would be captured and asked for three drainage pools, which were shown on the plan to be in the north, north portion of the field. And to assure that the water was captured by those drainage pools, he wanted a slight berm to make sure it didn't spill over and go down the slope. And that berm is what I show in red, approximately 120 feet. At the time the planning board approved this, the question came up about the fence, and we agreed to put the fence in, and then there was a discussion about putting the fence on top of the berm. And when asked that question, we, we, in particular myself, indicated to the board that we would be willing to accommodate that if it was allowed. However, subsequent to that, and I think Claire actually put it in her staff report at that point, indicating that that would require a variance because you can't have a fence on a berm, particularly if it exceeds the height of what's allowed. So that wasn't added as a condition of approval, but the review and, and location of the berm was a condition which was shown on the plans that got stamped. And the red area is the berm. And, and its maximum height, that was, the design height, was three feet at the westerly end. Subsequent to that, in accordance with the SWIP, the Rayner Group is part of our SWIP engineers meeting with the town engineer during this, as well as Butler Engineering, they determined that with the grading of the drainage pools, that that berm doesn't need to be three feet, it could be as low as one foot. So we noted that on these plans. The other issue that came up is that subsequent to the approval, our client went and got a building permit and actually installed the fence along the northerly property line. However, the fence was not a wood stockade fence as was specified on the plans, rather it was a vinyl white fence. And he did so thinking that it would be more attractive, number one, and it would be able to be better maintained in the long run. And he fully acknowledges that he did so, and it's contrary to the plans. So that was raised by the board at, at the meetings, a couple of meetings ago. And since then, and that's what you asked us to investigate, a couple of issues. One is, and is there anything else that could be associated with sound attenuation? So we did a little investigation and clearly went back to the noise analysis and the EIS and the subsequent reviews and the subsequent reviews, which were acknowledged in the staff report just prior to this. And clearly, the sound attenuation, which was acknowledged, was a solid fence. It was clearly appropriate and was additional mitigation to what was already incorporated into the entire plan. And so the plan was for a solid fence, it was going to be a wood stockade fence. And we also had a landscape plan and a host of plantings that would be associated primarily on the inside or the camp side of the fence because everything on the northerly side is either someone else's property, it's natural, particularly the first 400 feet going in. But when it veered into the property, all that area that you see, that wedge of area stretching anywhere between zero or where the berm is, 40 feet from the property line to the westerly. to the westerly part, is about 100 feet from the property line, that's all naturally wooded. Oak trees, primarily oak trees. So we were not to disturb that area, that was the other premise of this entire site plan. If the planners recall, we're to minimize disturbance, keep everything as natural as possible, particularly along our boundary lines. So our client installed this vinyl fence, and he prefers to keep it, but we were told that that was not in accordance with the plan. Of course, one option from my client is just to go back and install the wood stockade fence. That was specified in the approval. What he prefer is, he's willing to do, is actually keep the vinyl fence, but add the wood stockade fence on the northerly side immediately adjacent, so you would end up with two fences, both six-foot high. The stockade fence, which will have further noise attenuation characteristics, but also more importantly, which we've heard from our neighbors, and I did reach out to Mr. Silver, who's in the audience, and shared this information with him, and listened to his comments. And one of the comments was the aesthetics of the fence. And the expectation by the neighbors was that there was going to be a wood stockade fence, which was clearly, and I attached a copy of the approved landscaping plan, which happened to have a picture of a wood stockade fence, if you look at it, that's the last sheet of the package. But that was clearly, that was the expectation, and so our client is willing to actually install that wood stockade fence immediately adjacent, and so aesthetically, the view from the properties to the north would be a wood stockade fence.
So is there room between the vinyl fence and the property line?
So for the first, the first 400 feet, what we need to do is actually go out and survey it. And our client, if the fence, the vinyl fence is exactly on the property line, he'll move it.
Inwards.
He'll move it into our property and put the stockade fence, so that stockade fence is on the property line. There will be no encroachment of the fences.
Was there ever discussion of a vinyl fence?
No.
Okay.
No.
Do you think?
This is a case where, you know, it happens, you see it, the client just thought he was doing something better. Unfortunately, he didn't ask for your permission ahead of time, and we all apologize, he apologizes for that, but he's now, he's paying the price, he has to, you know, go and, he's willing to do that, but he also doesn't want to necessarily get rid of the fence, because he's already paid for it. He has no other use for it. So he'd like to just keep that there and add the other fence.
And it'll augment the sound.
VHB provided an analysis of that, that will clearly, you know, add and augment the noise attenuation. The other element, which, as you know, this is a work in progress, none of the, you know, all of the landscaping hasn't been installed yet. This is something that will continue, the landscaping will continue to be done. And that's why I attached the landscape plan, but you need to know that all the landscaping is not in at this time, and will be, just as, you know, before we get our CO, we have to have all the landscaping completed. We did hear comments, and I will, and I'm going to make sure my client is aware, that if you recall, the tennis court and the basketball court that was along the northerly line, which was this board's recommendation to remove and relocate further south on the property, is to be landscaped. And my understanding that there was activity areas taking place in, like last summer, that those areas are not activity areas, they're supposed to be landscaped areas, and we'll advise our clients accordingly. So the other issue is, the hope is, is that if the board would accept us placing, you know, essentially allowing the vinyl fence to remain with the stockade fence to be put there, the question comes down to that 120-foot portion of placing the fence on top of the My legal opinion is that we have no practical difficulty to obtain a variance. We are aware of, historically, the zoning board is not in favor of granting variances to allow fences on berms, no matter where they are in town. We understand that your staff report and the board would support that, but we think it might be a fuel effort, and it would take about six to nine months to even get, before the zoning board even inquire about that. Our plan would be to, as it was always thought of, is the berming was only, it would be inside the fence, and it's there only to direct, make sure any spill-over runoff goes into those pools and not down the slope. So it wasn't there, the berm was minimal, wasn't there for noise attenuation, was never planned or studied to be for noise attenuation.
Wayne, the berm's on the property line, or inside?
No. The berm, again, if you look at the plan, is only in that area that's red. And in the property line, that's where it veers into the property line. The berm, the easterly portion of the berm is about 43 feet from the property line, and then the northerly section, or the westerly section is about 100 feet from the property line. Property line goes straight this way, so this veers southwest.
So you have, you have room to run a fence line either in front of or behind the berm?
So the cross-section, you mean, there is a cross-section on page three that's highlighted, which show you, you know, a very rudimentary.
So it's the berm, the plastic fence, and then the stockade?
Correct.
The vinyl fence is right behind the berm right now.
Correct. Well, berm isn't in yet.
Oh, okay.
Was the objection, you think, to the vinyl fence, mostly because it was a white vinyl fence?
What I heard from the neighbors, particularly the aesthetics of the white vinyl fence, is that this is more of a natural setting, and that the white vinyl fence is intrusive to that setting visually, and that the wood stockade fence, that everyone had an expectation would go in, would blend more naturally and be less visible.
Were portions of that white vinyl fencing in disrepair?
Not really in disrepair, but I've heard from the neighbors that sections have fallen in some places during times. So here having, you know, clearly that needs to be supported, but here having another fence next to it with its own post and everything else will certainly help support that. But otherwise, the fence, the vinyl fence needs very little maintenance at all.
Did you get any feedback from the neighbors regarding this?
Yes.
And they're here, just so.
They're here, yes. I have talked to Mr. Silver, and I've talked to him as recent as about 15 minutes ago, outside in the hallway, and explained everything I was going to explain to the board today.
Would you like to ask for the neighbors' opinion?
What's that?
Should we ask for the neighbors' opinion?
We can't.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah, I don't.
This isn't a public hearing.
So we're not asking for reapproval or anything? It would be an amendment to allow the vinyl fence to remain, and I think I would want to acknowledge, to get the record clear, that the fence does not have to be, or at least that last portion would have to be on top of the berm.
Well, it can't be on top of the berm.
Right. Without a variance.
Without a variance. Something we can't, Andy. Claire, have you had a chance to review? I'm saying that you have.
Yeah.
Do you think it's a workable solution?
I think it is, it's pretty close to what was approved, in essence, and we have the support of the expert of the applicant's related noise, which was one of the concerns related to it.
So we'll have two fences for the noise, but we're not gonna go with the fence on top of the berm?
No, that, I do see the point, we don't usually do that.
Yeah.
There was the first time I've ever done that. But it was March 12th, and the world was ending, so.
Right, yeah, right. March 12th, holy mackerel.
Yeah, so, that's my excuse, anyway.
Okay, we'll take that.
When, I know when we went out there with the chairman, and we did the walk-around, there seemed that there was some miscommunication or misunderstanding about whether you folks were gonna apply for that variance way back then and try to get it on top of the berm. You know, there must have been some understanding, because it sounded like there was some expectation you were gonna go through that effort. You know, I wasn't around at that time, and just kind of relaying some of the sense I got, I don't know.
I think it was left as an option, but in hindsight, I don't think, you know, the discussion happened pretty rapidly, and I think Claire offered that at the last minute. We didn't really have an analysis. My response during that discussion was, is if we were permitted to do it, you know, and I was trying to bring an analogy, that if, in a commercial setting, if you were in a high-risk business zone, you're allowed a fence up to 10 feet. So you have a little more leeway on the planning board's side. However, this being, even though it's commercial use, so to speak, or non-residential use, it's in a residential zone, so the code doesn't allow that. And then when the applicant actually went and got the building permit for the fence, he tried to do that, and indicated it was gonna be on the berm, and the building inspector was emphatic that that could not be allowed.
And there was, and there was nothing explicit in whatever the board decided on that day, said, you'll go apart, like?
See, we really can't from a legal and technical standpoint. I mean, we can't really, if there's something non-conforming, we can't say, well, we'll approve this non-conformity, go get a variance.
Wayne, you could put those on, like, shrubbery or something.
Well, like I said, there's landscaping, well, we could do it on top of a berm, but we are planning landscaping in the area of that berm, but the landscaping hasn't been fully completed yet. And there is an approved landscape plan.
Yeah.
I did have questions by Mr. Silver as whether or not additional landscaping could take place, and I don't, I'd have to discuss that with my client, you know.
You could put some shrubs on top of the berm.
But the berm is gonna be a layer of one foot, and it's inside the fence.
I'm just saying.
So, and I think it's planned, I think it's on the landscape plan to be that, or in that vicinity, so we'll have to look at that. But I think the key is, until we actually complete the landscaping, you know, we don't know whether there's a need for anything more. But I did give Mr. Silver some assurance that certainly, if they reached out to us and there's a discussion, we could still have that at that point, when the landscaping is completed, number one. Number two is that the areas that were used historically for activities, the old tennis court and the basketball court, are to be fully landscaped and not used as activity areas, and we'll remind our client that that, in fact, is the case, so that can't be used. And they were the areas that are closest to the properties in the north.
Are they hoping to operate with someone?
Yeah, they're continuing with the tennis camp activities that they have, just until they get everything fully completed.
Gotcha. So Claire, our action then is to amend, amend the approved site plan reflecting these changes that we've discussed?
Yeah, so vinyl fence to remain, probably a condition that the stockade fence go to the north of that, between the neighbors, right?
Correct.
Well, I think, I think what we heard is if, they're gonna survey the fence.
Well, but she's correct, the stockade fence would be on the northerly side of the vinyl fence, and it will have to be on our property. So if we survey and find the vinyl fence is on the property line, we'll have to move that, so that the stockade fence could be.
So you'll incorporate that into the, it's gonna be subject to verification.
Yeah, it's all the same length as what was originally agreed to, wood, all basically parallel.
I mean, logistically, it could be problematic if there is a slope on that side, and then you're trying to put the stockade, is the white gonna peek out? I mean, how do you address that, like?
We're gonna make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna see any white.
So, no?
From the north side.
From the north.
Okay, so not to be visibly intrusive on any. Not to be visible from the north.
Well, what they don't want is the white fence.
Peaking out.
Overlapping.
Over.
Right.
I think that's easy at ground level, I think, if you're on the second floor of a house, that may be different.
Okay.
You know, to make vinyl fences of different colors.
Well, it's interesting, and I wanna thank Jackie, who's not here, but she has been forwarding information about sound attenuation, but some of the materials that she was suggesting are actually materials that are typically attached to chain-link type fences.
Yeah.
And it is a vinyl-type material, but most interesting, as you can imagine now, that they can make it into any kind of color, or, you know, they, I saw pictures of the product where it's all brick wall.
You'd make a brick, a brick?
Or signage, or anything else, so it, but unfortunately, you know, and that was addressed actually by the board back in 2020, but those materials don't make sense hanging on top of the solid fence to start with. It's the solid fence that works. And here, now you're gonna have two fences next to each other, so.
So the modification would be the vinyl fence to remain, there'll be no fencing on top of the berm. That's the modification. There'll be a finding about the noise information provided by the applicant, and there'll be conditions that the approved stockade fence shall be installed to the north of the vinyl, that the vinyl fence should not be visible from the northerly property, and the fee for modification.
And I'll get you actually the full set of plans?
Yes, please, and then there'll be, you know, six sets of plans.
Okay, very good. Do we have motion to do modifications? Motion by Craig. Second by George, all in favor, I opposed, abstentions, we have five yes. Wayne, thank you for, thank you for your efforts.
Thanks, Wayne.
Claire, are you gonna still stay in order?
Yes.
Louis Sanford, item 12?
Yes, this one is a little bit, I think these, should be good. This should be a simple one. In this case, the applicant has merged three properties. This is a very, it's a large piece of parcel that originally was, this was a parcel that was part of the Sanford subdivision, and then there was two other parcels to the south. So they've merged it to create one compound for one single-family residence and the appropriate structures. Normally, that's not something I'd bring to you, but the health department in this case, because the approval back in 1980s said no modification of the subdivision without planning board approval, they're considering a merger to be a modification. And I see their points legally, but we would say, no, no, everybody, merge your properties, we're good with that, right? So this would be a simple resolution, just to say you have acknowledged and no objection to the merger of those three parcels for the minor subdivision.
Which happened 40 years ago.
That happened, probably, probably 15, five years ago, but, you know, but because the health department's now looks at, you know, depends on the project, but looks at something, this would be enough for them to then proceed with their health department approval.
Okay, we can acknowledge that. Do we have motion? Motion by George.
Second.
Second by Craig, all in favor, I opposed, abstentions, five yes, two absent.
So the case of Louis, Puccio.
Item 13.
Yeah, 13, Puccio. This is gonna be an extension, I don't have a staff report yet, the town engineer, they're still not quite there with the town engineer, so I'm asking for a two-month extension on this, so we can work out the issues prior to.
Very good. Do we have motion?
July 24th.
Motion.
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Craig, all in favor, I opposed, abstentions, five yes, two absent.
My next one is Homeland Towers Flanders. So let's go through it just briefly. They're proposing a wireless facility towards the front of the property, about 150 feet is proposal for the main project with external antennas. It is a property that is a auto salvage but or junkyard in the town of Southampton. It does have several residential pieces of property to the west, but to the east and south is county parklands. And so it is at 2055 Flanders Road, it's Zone CR60, it's in the Central Pine Barrens Core Preservation Area. It's 6.7 acres. There was pre-submission conference date on April 13th. Area. It's 6.7 acres. There was pre-submission conference date on April 13th of this year. And there is two alternatives. One is an alternative for 150 foot monopole, which is a tree. And the alternative is 170 foot flagpole with internal antennas. And it's shown on the plans. The pre-submission conference was held on April 13th. Comments received of representative, represents a civic group, Franca, opposed to the project, concerned with the height and the fall zone, no drop calls along Flanders Road. But there was no public comments received during the remainder of the the comment period, the 30 day written comment period. If it was to proceed, their full site plan, special exception application, special exception petition, the engineering site plan information, variance from section 330 6A, only one use permitted per lot in a residential area zones, EAF Part 1 long form and visual assessments, the zoning code. So I go through the zoning code, which is an extensive part. I just kind of want to summarize. Basically, it doesn't meet the setbacks to the east. They're proposing 27 feet. You would have to do at least 100%, which is 150 feet setback. That would be from these property lines. This property line, it would be more significant. It's 300%. And from the house itself, it would be 300%. So that those are the most significant variances. Those 300% is to incur to approve these projects away from residential uses. We don't want to put them right on top of it. Another thing is that this is an avoidance area. This is located in the Central Pine Barrens Core Preservation Area. It's near open space. It is by scenic corridor. This is portion of 24 is a scenic corridor as identified in the 1999 comprehensive plan. I'm just going through it generally. I don't want to give you the exact codes because there's a lot there. But so there's in the bottom page three, there's general requirements for you to factor and when considering this. One is the height, the proposed transmission structure. Two is the proximity to residential structures and residential district boundaries, the nature of the uses on the adjacent or nearby properties, and that the no existing alternative support structure can accommodate the applicant's proposed structure. Here I did want to mention, and I should have, I put it in my comments, is that about a mile to the west is the Flanders Fire District cell tower, which was approved around 2,000. It's a 200 foot structure located on that piece of property. And as far as I know, all five carriers are on it. So that's just a point of information. So I may include that under this section about proximity to the nearest structure, wireless transmission. I touch on landscaping, and then I touch on the setbacks. And then the bottom page four is the 200 feet or 300% from a designated area. And this is regarding the residents where a 247 foot setback is proposed where 450 foot setback is required. But all the setbacks from the additional residential structures that are adjacent should be shown because I don't think they meet the other residential structures that are to the west. So on top of page five, this again is about the setback to nearest residential units. And then other zoning variances is the number of uses on the property, whether it's considered a primary or secondary use. It's been determined differently in different every circumstances. And then five starts to go through the general special exception standards where it's compliance to general parts of the code. M B is the interference with reasonable use of adjacent residential properties. D is the use, the site particularly suitable for such a use. Again, then we do setbacks from the adjacent property lines. And then J is the buffer yards. Other zoning issues, you can see that is a CEO for a junkyard. I think I'm pulling the site plan on this. It was received relief in 1997 related to the junkyard use. And I think this is to construct the building. And then you, the planning board at the time had site plan standards on this. I believe all the junkyard activity was to be behind the fence. So I'm pulling that site plan to see because it's over the years, I think it's kind of cracked into that buffer zone there. So we just want to make sure compliance with that. And that would be part of a secret issue. Other environmental issues is related to the core preservation area. This would be constitute probably development within the core preservation area. It would have to be obviously referred and approved by Pine Barrens. So do you want to go through the issues?
Sure.
Okay. And the issues would be, project would be an enlisted action. And then you'd have to do determining, do the determination prior to even the application completes. I'm citing some issues related to its compliance with the wireless master plan that may have a significant impact on the environment. And the visual impact of the structures is potential environmental issue. Two would be the Central Pine Barrens issue. Three is the waiver for several sections of the wireless code. Four, the single family residences are avoidance areas. Five, the applicant should consider an alternative location. Six is the existence of the 200 foot structure to the west of the Flanders Fire Department. Seven is the number of uses per lot. Eight is the uses, the properties approved with the junkyard. Nine is the exterior antenna. So there's the other two alternatives. Well, there's three proposals. The exterior antenna, be highly visible from the nearby roadways and adjacent public lands, the proximity of the proposed to public road makes it possible that the structure will be visually obtrusive. The tree design, the design of a wireless support structure as a tree is not in keeping with the type of natural vegetation in the area and represents a height three times the average height of native trees. This does not meet the standard of stealth design. 11 is the flagpole interior antennas. The interior antennas are preferred design with the structure. However, the proposed height of 170 of the structure is anticipated to be a visual impact to the adjacent area. Public hearing will be acquired and there will be referrals be made. So I just state here at the end, the conclusion, the plan provides significant issues with compliance of the project due to the site's location. Minor changes to the project do not appear to overcome these issues. However, if the applicant chooses to proceed, a full environmental review, site plan, special exception application, a public hearing will be required.
Did the applicant provide us with a needs analysis?
Not yet. That will be requirement on the site plan. But I mean, the applicant is here if you want to speak.
Good afternoon. Robert Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder and Snyder on behalf of the applicant. No, we did not provide that as of yet. But obviously, that's the purpose of the application is that there is a need. We're aware of the two sites that bookend the existing sites of the fire department and the police department, east and west on Flanders Road. Unfortunately, they don't provide coverage in the middle, particularly in the main roadway, Flanders Road, but also the surrounding parkland. If you go to the to the west, heavily residential. If you go to the east, heavily parkland. So we were trying to find a balance of a location that would be separated from the dense residential area, but on a lot that actually we could lease because we're unable to lease parkland because it's parkland. So we'll show as part of our application when we proceed, number one, why there's a need, why those existing sites don't cover this area for coverage and capacity. And number two, how we're somewhat boxed in between the core preservation area, the parkland, and the residential uses to the west. So that'll all be part of our application. Thank you.
Well, you have the separation issue also to the residential structure, which is significant hurdle. I don't know how you're going to address that.
Well, I think I think we're well aware of all the code provisions. And we do understand that there are some hurdles there that, you know, that's our burden. We have to show you the what and the why. There is overarching federal law, which basically says that these types of facilities cannot be prohibited as long as we show that need. And our concern is that we have to go through the process and show why this is the least intrusive, why we're the furthest from the residences that we can get. So for example, on one side of the property, we're only 27 feet from the property line. But that's next to parkland. And I understand the arguments there. But if we were to go further from that property line to the east, then we'd be going further to the west, which would bring us closer to the residences. So it's a bit of a catch 22.
Or a lower tower.
So that'll certainly be part of our analysis as well. We're certainly going to look at lowering the tower to the minimum height necessary while keeping in mind, as Claire mentioned, the other sites, you know, you want colocation. The code requires colocation. You don't want multiple towers or a proliferation of towers. So you want to have enough height that you can co-locate carriers. And we've worked with you in the past in the watermill site, and we understand the concerns. We'll look at the different designs. We'll try and come up with the minimum height and the best design possible. And that's what we'll come back with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a copy of the.
I do. I have the draft. Thank you.
So Claire, very, very comprehensive.
Thank you.
Great job. I wanted to do these before.
And so our only action then today is just to adopt the conference report.
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate. Second by George. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Five yes. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Claire, are we ready to go with Lewis Road?
We are.
Road improvement plan, I guess.
Yeah, in this case, I was starting to write this up and I realized that I had town engineer approval on the road, the road plan, but I don't have the highway department approval on it yet. We could do it as a condition, but maybe it's better to have the highway department and any changes he might have incorporated into the plan. So I might hold off on that one if you're inclined. I don't know if the applicant, what the applicant wants to do.
Wayne, give any thoughts on this?
We're okay either way the board wants to go. Certainly having the highway superintendent's input would be very helpful. I know this was something, you know, on Spiny Road that the board more or less asked for. And we just want to make sure he's comfortable when we actually are out there doing work.
Lewis Road.
Lewis Road, that's right. Sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, I'm just going to get a double check on that.
Is this for the turn lane?
Yes, the turn lane, which your consultants approved, town engineer came back and approved it. And then I, and then I'm like writing it up. And I'm like, oh, highway department hasn't responded. So let me get that response and incorporate it in one resolution.
It's not that time.
What we did is we prepared the actual plans. That's what you would be looking at now and approving. And it's been reviewed by the town engineer and your consultant and everything else. And the only person I think we haven't heard from in writing is the superintendent of highways.
Yeah. So I'll work on that. And if everything's good, we'll put it out for the next couple weeks.
And I'm sure you'll address it. But one of the questions I had was the timing of this. Do you do it now? Do you do it when the whole, you know, when the project's half done? You know, so I'm sure you'll address that.
Yeah. And that actually you had as a condition that that should be clear when we approve the construction management plan on the project. So that is all tied in together. Yeah. Good. So that portion, do you want to, do you want to come back? So the one thing I did get, I just, I think we just forwarded this to you. But we did get feedback from Petrovic related to groundwater management plan. So I do have a copy of that. If you just want to look at it, again, if you're comfortable, we can do something. If you're, if you want some time, we can look at it. I just gave it to the applicants like a half an hour ago. So they just got it.
Have you had a chance to review it, Wayne?
Of course, I studied it on my way here. We've actually, you know, through time, this has been, the whole groundwater monitoring has been, we've been working with Marty Petrovic since this project started. So we're aware of his general concerns and comments. Our client, you know, our consultants literally, like Claire said, only got this formal report in the last hour or so. So we'd ask an opportunity to look at it, just like you should all look at it. You know, we saw a couple elements. There's one in there about the timing of different things, including the baseline testing before construction, which didn't occur because we didn't get the wells in.
Yeah.
That was that whole thing, getting wells in before, and it didn't happen. But, you know, there are things that could easily be addressed.
Okay, good. So I think that this is just informational. And we'll have this back, both issues back before the board, if everybody's.
Okay.
Great.
Great. So no action on the Lewis Road for today?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Are we going to Watermill Square, Claire?
Yes, we are.
Item 16.
Russell Blue is here, from the applicants. And I'm going to give you a copy of the site plan to see if we'll look at it. This would be for, there's an existing restaurant there. And you approved back in 2017, 16 seats in the like the common area. They'd like to go up to about 53 seats for the restaurants. Normally, that could be administrative, but once it goes over one third, the interior space, I bump it to you just to double check and make sure that it doesn't get excessive and that makes sense for our site plan. So.
Okay.
Can I just make another?
Well, yes.
Number 16.
Just stated 86.
Sorry, but I'm just, just got that.
86.
I'm pretty sure, Claire, that in 17, they gave another 16. There's 16 under the canopy and 16 in the court.
There was a couple approvals.
Right. I just want to.
Yeah. And did you identify some?
Yes, we did. Yep.
This is the site plan. So he got it.
About a couple of steps.
That's five.
This one.
Everyone gets their own. So the only caveat is I like to get the fire marshal's approval before we do an approval for this. That would be up to you, of course. Everybody wants an approval for outdoor seating on Memorial Day weekend. I did do a referral to him, to the fire marshal, I should say. But we could leave it as a condition if you're inclined to grant the approval in this case. I had them give the information about where the neighboring doors were, so it wasn't interfering with the operation of the other businesses in that courtyard area. So.
And this is all, not all going to be covered, is it?
No, no. The only covered area is that 16 seats underneath this steam, which is already been approved.
Oh, okay.
Can I just make another?
Of course.
Just so you know, I mean, the fire marshal has seen this. And during COVID, we had 60 seats approved in that.
Okay, good. So this should be not.
Right. I don't want, we're not really breaking any new.
Yeah, new, no new. Okay, so we can go ahead and.
And authorize a conditional on fire marshal granting approval for the actual location of the additional seats.
Great. Do we have a motion?
Do you have somewhere to?
No, it's whereas there's been a site plan for this, we have a crest for this, and we're going to prove 53 seats as shown on the plan that you have.
Subject to fire marshal.
Subject to fire marshal.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig. Second by George. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Nothing like making a motion.
I have a walk on. This is for canal.
Thank you.
Properties.
You too.
Boathouses for landscaping associated with phase two.
Which, which site is this?
It said walk on.
A Waha. It's for the canal's properties on the east side of the canal.
Okay.
Which is the boathouses. And they are completed phase two. And they're, we're proposing maintenance bonds for that landscaping in the amount of $42,698.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Craig. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Five yes, two absent.
And then I think my only other one was Bydewee, number 21.
Bydewee, yep.
And that's off the agenda.
That's administrative.
That's a signature. And then it was, it's off, they said.
Oh, Bydewee is acknowledged as a signature.
Yeah, and it's off.
Okay, and it's off.
Yes, it is. I think we're good.
Yeah, thanks. Folks, before we adjourn, just like to set up a mechanism. I know we have some confusion with quorum this week. I know a couple of people out. Typically in the past, we've used our secretary, Kristen, to funnel, you know, when we're going to be out. I thought that might be good to reinstitute that. Jackie's in favor of it. And so with your indulgence, I think when, if we know we're going to, certain days we're going to be out, just feed them to Kristen, then we can always check with her, make sure. And then that would prompt an alert like, whoa, we got too many people out this one week, you know, to advise us. Right? So great. Thanks, Kristen. Is everyone in tonight? I'm here.
I think the only thing is I think CBS has requested the the application. I think the only thing is, I think CBS has requested the application be opened, the hearing be opened and adjourned to July 13th.
Oh, okay.
If that's acceptable to the board.
Was the noticing.
No, no. They proper, they're going to open it. And if obviously there's public, they can speak. But they want to have the substance of their proposal done.
So we're just going to open it and take public comment, no presentation?
Yes. They'll be present, and then if you have any questions, they'll be present.
But we will take public.
Yeah, they're not going to.
Public comment.
Yeah, if there's public there, obviously. There could be, there could be not being.
So there'll be then two opportunities for the public to weigh in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. But the substance with the presentation will happen on the, on the 13th.
Good.
And that'll be, I guess, re-notice for people.
It has to be posted, but the re-noticing, because we are just opening and adjourning.
Right.
You just post the property then in that case. Because it's a continuation of the hearing, yeah.
And of course, the people that come tonight will hear that.
And they can, they can speak if they have made the effort.
And speak tonight.
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.